I now call to order the organizational meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. The purpose of this meeting is to approve organizational matters as required by the Code of Virginia. I am opening this organizational meeting because the term of the school board chair expired at midnight on June 30th. As customary, the superintendent opens and leads the meeting until the school board appoints a chairman. We will begin this morning's meeting with the invocation and pledge. Here to do the honors is Dr. Wayne K. Smith, Acting Chief of Schools.
Good morning, Dr. Mitchell, members of the board. Today, I would like to share a poem by Michael Wynn entitled "A Pledge to Myself." "Today, I pledge to be the best possible me. No matter how good I am, I know that I can become better. Today, I pledge to build on the work of yesterday, which will lead me into the rewards of tomorrow. Today, I pledge to feed my mind with knowledge, my body with strength, and my spirit with faith. Today, I pledge to reach my goals, new challenges, and new horizons. Today, I pledge to listen to the best beat of my drummer, which will lead me onward to search for dreams. Today, I pledge to believe in me." Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Our first item on the agenda is the board organization. At this time, the school board will elect a chairman for the 2025-2026 school year. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Dr. Terry Best.
I second.
Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of chairman are closed. May I have a motion to close the nominations for the office of the chairman?
I have a motion that we close the nominations for the office of chairman.
Dr. Terry Best has been nominated to serve as the 2025-2026 school board chairman. Is there any discussion regarding the nomination?
Yes, I would like to just make a statement. As the outgoing chair, I really want to express my full support for the nomination of Dr. Best as chair of the school board. Over the past term, she has been a valuable support to both the board and the superintendent, and we've established really strong practices that will allow her to continue providing that support in a very meaningful way. I deeply appreciate her voice while I was chair, her passion, her ability to channel both into critical thinking, and that that really does benefit our division, our staff, our students, and the systems that we uphold. And I do have every confidence in her ability to lead, and I encourage the board to stand behind her as we move forward together.
I need a second to close this. I need a second.
Second. Ms. Moore Buffalo, please call the roll.
Okay, this is for the nomination for Dr. Best for chair.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Dr. Terry Best has been selected as the 2025-2026 school board chairman. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, and I look forward to serving with you. At this time, the school board will elect a vice chairman for the 2025-2026 school year. Are there any nominations?
Miss Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Alger for vice chair.
Second.
Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. May I have a motion to close the nomination for the office of vice chairman?
I motion that we close the nominations for vice chair.
Second.
Ms. Alger has been nominated to serve as the 2025-26 school board vice chair. Is there any discussion regarding the nomination?
Dr. Best, I need to take a roll to close the nominations first.
Okay.
Okay. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero, and then now you can put the nomination on the four.
Thank you. Mrs. Alger has been nominated to serve as the 2025-26 school year board vice chair. Is there any discussion regarding the nomination?
Ms. Buffalo, please call the roll. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Alger has been selected as the 2025-26 school board vice chairman. Congratulations.
Ms. Moore Buffalo, did you get a closing for the chair?
I got...
Or can you use it for both?
I don't have a closing for the chair. So I need a vote for Dr. ...
Closing the nomination.
The closed nomination. Okay. Yes. It's called a roll?
Just call the roll.
Okay, thank you.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. So congratulations again. Thank you.
Double congratulations.
All right, we will now move on to Section 2, the Consent Agenda, which includes 2.01, Appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk of the School Board.
I move to approve the consent agenda as...
Wait. There's eight items, so you can just call them all down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about action items. I'm sorry. We will now move on to Section 2, the Consent Agenda, which includes 2.01, Appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk of the School Board, 2.02, Appointment of the Agents and Deputy Agents of the School Board, 2.03, Appointment of Persons to Serve in the Absence of the Superintendent, 2.04, Reinvestment Resolution for Use of Virginia Public School Authority Funding for Technology Purchases, 2.05, Impact Aid Authorization, 2.06, 2025-26 Out-of-Division Student Tuition, $6,640, 2.07, 2025-2026 Tuition Rate for Non-Virginian Resident Students, $13,985, and 2.08, Proposed 2025-2026 School Board Meeting Calendar. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Ma'am?
A second.
Ms. Buffalo, call the roll. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Section 3, Action Items. 3.01, Personnel Actions. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This afternoon or this morning, I'd like to make three recommendations. My first recommendation is for Dr. Anna Estrada-Williams as the Assistant Principal for Gildersleeve Middle School. Dr. Estrada-Williams has a doctoral degree in Educational Leadership from Liberty University. She currently holds the position of Assistant Principal with Richmond Public Schools, and she has been a teacher and a Dean of Support and School Culture. Additionally, I'd like to recommend Ms. Christina Majevich as the Assistant Principal at Denby High School. She currently has a master's degree in Educational Leadership from Old Dominion University. She has been an English teacher. She currently serves as the English Instructional Lead at Menchville High School, and she has also held the position of Freshman Transition Teacher. And rounding out this group, I'd like to recommend Mr. Reginald Woodhouse III as the Assistant Principal at Gildersleeve Middle School. Mr. Reginald Woodhouse III has a master's degree from Norfolk State University. He currently serves as a Special Education Program Advisor and an Instructional Lead. He has taught special education courses as well as math and English. And those conclude my recommendations for appointments.
Thank you.
I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Dr. Anna Estrada-Williams as the Assistant Principal at Gildersleeve Middle School, Ms. Christina Majevich as the Assistant Principal at Denby High School, and Mr. Reginald Woodhouse III as the Assistant Principal at Gildersleeve Middle School.
Can you give a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Buffalo, call the roll, please. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Section 3, Action Item 3.02, 2025-26 Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you recall, in our last board meeting, Dr. Woodard came before you to share some proposed changes to our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. I am here to request that you approve the changes of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that were recommended to you last month. You now have a motion?
I move to approve the 2025-26 Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion?
Quick question. Were there any changes since we saw it? I know we got copies of the...
No, there were not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
So my comments are similar to what they were last year when we reviewed the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. I'm still wanting to have a complete removal of cell phones during the school day and without exception, because I believe that that is the greatest mental health crisis facing young people, is the use of that technology. But particularly during the school day and any respite that we can give young people from that technology, there's plenty of research that demonstrates that it's helpful to their development, to their brains, to their social and emotional well-being. So when we talk about developing young people and their brains and the effects that it has, making exceptions, I'm still against that. And then I see, and I recognize that some of these things are state code, but I still, because we're voting, this is my vote, that I don't like when there is the same sanction for a level, between levels, same consequence between levels for the offense. And I see several areas where it's the same consequence. There's no difference. In other words, the administrator has no latitude to make differentiated consequences for a student in several areas. And where those areas exist, I don't accept that. I don't accept that you would give the same consequence regardless of how severe the infraction is. So for those reasons, I'm going to have the same opinion this year that I did last year.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say that I'm very appreciative. I know we said it the last time, but of the committee that stuck with us again to work through our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. That means a lot, and I would imagine that they may be watching or will later see this video, and I want them to know that we really do appreciate their support.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to say that I also appreciate the fact that there was feedback given and changes were made based on that feedback to tighten some parts of the discipline portion of it. And so I want to recognize that, that folks are listening to staff, and that's important. I think the key to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is, as always, consistency. If we apply it, whether it's a bus driver that's providing referral or a classroom teacher, whomever, it's important that we're consistent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Buffalo? Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion passes six one.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 3.04. I'm sorry, we just did that one. Vice... I'm sorry. The next item on our agenda is 3.03, the 2025-2026 Student Fees. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Last month, Dr. Rogers presented to you our proposed fee schedule for our student fees. We would like for you to approve the fees as presented by Dr. Rogers. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the 2025-26 Rights and Respons... I'm sorry. I move to approve the student fees for the 2025-26 school year.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Thank you. Ms. Buffalo, call the roll. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 3.04, New and Revised Policies. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Last month, Ms. Tracy Brooks came before you and shared some of the revisions to some of the policies. We do have several policies we would like you to vote on this morning. They are under the title of School Board Governance and Operations Chapter. You have a question?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. We're about to entertain a motion. I would recommend the motion contain all of the items except for B.J. and B.E.E. where I'd like to have some comments and discussion on those two items.
Which one was that?
Say it again.
B.J. and B.E.E., so that's...
What was that? Which one again, Mr. Brown?
B.J. and B.E.E.
B.J. and B... I don't see B.E.
Yeah.
It's kind of in the middle. It's at the top. Yeah.
B.E.E. Oh, it's at the top. Okay.
Got it.
So you're asking for these two to be removed, and that the others, we vote as a group?
As a group. That's correct, yes.
Okay. So then we need to have a motion. So he's basically...
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve all of the new policy items for Chapter B with the exception of B.J. and B.E.E.
Okay, I second. I second.
Ms. Buffalo, any questions and any discussion regarding that motion? Ms. Buffalo, call the roll, please. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. So now we'll entertain a motion to approve all of the policies except for B.E.E. and BK. But I'll say what it is. I'm sorry.
B.J.
B.J., which is electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, and B.J. School Board Legislative Program.
And so, Madam Chair, since I'm the problem, I'll make the motion to approve B.J. and B.E.E. so we can have discussion on those two items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussions or questions regarding that motion?
So, Madam Chair, I would like to make some comments in regards to B.J. and B.E.E. In terms of B.J., what I note is that B.J. does not currently have our missions, our vision statement that we have worked on in our strategic planning. So that's, I think, a change that we would want to make prior to voting on this item, because it doesn't reflect the updated vision and mission statement that we have been working towards. That's my main comment on B.J., as well as I do think, because our other policy regards to board development talks about participation in regional, state, and national events as far as education, that our B.J., our legislative program, should also reflect the same, should mirror the same language, that we would work to include our legislative work in coordination with regional, state, and national bodies as well, so that we would bring those in line with the policy that we just approved. So those would be my comments on updates to B.J. And in regard to B.E.E., I have the same, you know, I have the same comment that I've had over the last few years when we talked about this. I've been on the board long enough to remember that B.E. was introduced as a COVID-only policy, and I predicted at the time. I said, "Oh, no, this will live on forever," and I was given assurances by this board. "Oh, no, when COVID's over, we're going to sunset this, or we're going to get rid of this." But we keep bringing it back in. And so I think that B.E.E., it was introduced during COVID, and its time has passed. And we have been, the board has been able to operate, you know, since the 50s without B.E.E., and we can operate now without B.E.E. So I just remind the board that that was something that we had discussed, but we keep approving B.E.E.
Any comments?
Yes. Madam Chairwoman, a question for legal. Is embodied in this the opportunity for board members to participate remotely? Not like a complete remote meeting, but just if a school board member is, you know, participates remotely, like a one-off, one-member. Is this the only place that it can be done in our policies?
Yes. And it's... This policy allows, is pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, which allows this for public bodies in Virginia. And it's up to you all, if you want it as a part of your... In order to participate remotely individually with a quorum present in the physical location, you do have to have a policy authorizing it, and so it's up to the board.
And this is what we have that embodies that as well. Okay.
So it's not just the COVID, but also for any emergencies or anything of that nature?
Well, again, this, 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 again, you're talking about... Mr. Brown, I'm just looking at the policy. You're talking, this policy encompasses the remote participation by individuals as well as, yeah, if there's an emergency, just looking down at the policy, a declared emergency, state or local, then you can have an all-virtual public meeting electronically. And that's, you know, that is allowed certainly under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would like to make a comment. And I think we did discuss it, Mr. Brown, during COVID. I think we did have some conversation. I don't really recall saying we would go back and change it when COVID was over, but we did have some conversation. I'll acknowledge that. For me, I think every now and then emergencies do come up in people's lives, and if they are making the effort to be a part of the board meeting, I think they should have the opportunity to do so. So I'm in support.
And, Madam Chair, quick point of... To B.J., you know, yes, this is our current mission statement, but there's no reason we couldn't, if we did update our mission statement in a month or two, revise B.J. to... Is there any reason we couldn't revise B.J. in a month or two if we felt it was appropriate?
Or B.J. or even B.E.E. if we got to a point where we thought that it was being abused. We should be able to go back and revise either of those. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you could certainly. So...
I'm sorry.
Right, in five years. That would be my response, is in five, yeah, in five years, we'll be...
No, we can always look at the policy.
My recommendation would be is that, once we get our new strategic plan in place, that we remember, Mr. Brown, to look at our policies or remind leadership to look at our policies and see which of... Because there might be more than just this one. Is what, when you started talking, I was like, "Oh, yes, maybe we just tabled this one." But I really believe there probably are more policies that, once we get that strategic plan, then we probably need to do a deeper dive and make sure we've got everything. You know the policies pretty well in terms of having recently reviewed. Are there others that you think that we would need to probably look at?
There are going to be more than one. This is the first one that has come up, but there are going to be additional ones.
Okay, so maybe we could do all of those together. We could have...
It sounds like a policy committee.
Mr. Hunter?
And going back to the remote or virtual acceptance, it's us, as I said again. If someone's abusing that policy, then we, remember, that person has to be voted on by us to let them come into the meeting. Right, so we still have control. You still have to have the majority of the people, of the board members, which is us, to say, "Hey, this individual or this board member has abused or abusing this virtual, you know, opportunity." So it still relies on us. So, you know, if we can't manage ourselves, then, you know, we don't need to be up here.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to say that I do agree with Mr. Brown in terms of updating with the goals and the language. I think that's important with all of our policies, to make sure that the language is updated, so...
And may I say also, Madam Chair, that this policy calls for, it has to be adopted annually pursuant to the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. So you all will be reviewing this policy. By law, you have to adopt it annually.
Thank you. It's good to know. Yeah, good to know. Ms. Buffalo, can you read the motion? I'm sorry, any other comments or discussion? Can you read the motion that we're getting ready to... Yes. This motion is that Mr. Brown has moved to approve policy B.J., which encompasses School Board Legislative Program, and B.E.E., Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. It's been seconded by Ms. Searl Slaw. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I move to approve the following policies.
What?
It's already...
It's already been on the floor. You just need to vote. I'm getting ready to call the roll.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I'm jumping.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion passes six one. Thank you.
And before we move on to the next item, we have a statement by Mrs. Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, Rashina Harris, a member of the Newport News School Board, do hereby declare, pursuant of 2.2-3112B1 and 2.2-3115H of the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, that the school board meeting of July 1st, 2025, the school board will consider amending its fiscal year 2026 operating budget, the transaction, and, too, in part, the transaction involves approving the allocation of funding to be received by the City of Newport News for school board operating purposes, and the entire amended fiscal year 2026 operating budget will be sent to the Newport News City Council for its approval. I have a personal interest in the transaction by virtue of my marriage to Councilman Marcellus L. Harris III, who is a member of the Newport News City Council. I am a member of a group of three or more persons, the members of which are affected by this transaction. And pursuant 2.2-3112B1 and 2-2, 2.2-3115H of the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I do apologize, but we need to go back, and then we'll go forward. We did not vote on the other policies. We voted to remove those two, but we did not vote on the other policies. So we have, we need to go back and vote on the other policies, and then we'll move forward.
Can I just ask a question, because I think your motion was, his motion was to approve, and then there was a second, and then there was a vote.
So it was all together?
Right. Right, I made, I know that was a problem, so I made it easy for you all, though. We voted on all the other policies first, and those were already approved, and then I made a second motion, and then, yeah.
Yeah, it was seven-zero for the whole slate. Excluding BEE and BJ, and then you all voted on BJ and BEE. And it was, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, all right, now we'll continue to move forward. So, thank you, Ms. Harris, and thank you, Ms. Buffalo. The next item on our agenda is 3.05, amend the FY '26 operating budget. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This morning, Ms. Scarlett Minto, our chief financial officer, is going to come and share a brief presentation with the amended information. She will present to you the amended FY '26 operating budget.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Mitchell. Thank you for this opportunity to provide our fiscal year 2026 revenue projection update. As you may recall, the school board approved fiscal year 2026 budget came in at $406.3 million, or an increase over fiscal year '25 of $6.4 million. The final state budget is projected to increase their state funding from $275.2 million to $280.3 million, or an additional $5.1 million over the current approved fiscal year '26 budget. The new fiscal year 2026 state revenue projection is based on our March ADM of 24,444 students, which is down from the approved projection that we used of 24,676 students, which is a decrease of 232 students. This increase in state revenue is reflected as an increase in basic aid and additional funding for at-risk students, and the removal of the support cap allowing additional funding for support staff. Total revenue for fiscal year 2026 is projected to be $411.4 million, a total increase of $11.5 million, which also includes the additional $2.4 from the city, which has already been approved and appropriated. Let me see, next. As you know, we were able to provide more services for our students as a result of the operating budget funds in combination with their grant funding. So any changes in grant funding will have an immediate impact on our current spending plans. With this in mind, there is a sense of uncertainty in what to expect with their federal grant funding, due to Trump, the Trump administration's proposed budget cuts, their shifting towards block grants, and talks of delays in the receipt of this funding. According to the detail in President Trump's fiscal year 2026 budget for the Department of Education, some funding changes that will affect Newport News Public Schools is considered part of a K-12 simplified funding program, which I think they're referring to as a block grant, in which most programs are consolidated for elementary and secondary into a single-state grant program reportedly. This gives the states more flexibility. However, this, of course, means that the funding may not be used the same way it's being currently used. There are also additional federal grants in question as to whether or not they meet the priorities of the new administration. So that's not even really spelled out in his budget, it's just like this side thing that's going on, where they're reviewing some other existing grants to see whether they meet the priorities. So in total, we are awaiting word on the status of $4.3 million dollars in grant funding, federal grant funding for fiscal year '26, and an additional grant funding of $3.4 million, which crosses two fiscal years, '26 and '27. These grants currently help our, support our most vulnerable students, as well as ensure compliance with federal law. There is also anticipated delays, as state education agencies are now reporting, even if they do get these funds on July 1st, like they should, they are envisioning some logistical problems, getting the money out to the school divisions. Your approved fiscal year 2026 budget ensured employees' compensation remained a priority. A general increase of 3% for all contracted staff, maintenance of our teacher salary scales, increasing associate teacher starting pay, increase in teacher starting pay, provides for market and experience adjustments for some eligible support groups, and provides for a sign-on bonus for high-need licensed positions. Whoops, that's a too far. Yes, there we are. With this additional $5.1 million in funding, we may be able to take another look at compensation for instructional staff, bus drivers, and clerical support. We may also work to improve employee engagement opportunities, such as recognition programs, professional development, and employee wellness initiatives. We have rebalanced the budget as follows, beginning with the total revenue of $11.5 million. Total personnel costs increased $17.7 million, include the 3% general increase, market adjustments, sign-on bonus for high-need licensed positions, anticipated additional compensation adjustments and employee engagement opportunities, increase in healthcare costs and OPEB claims. Personnel decreases totaling $2.7 million included a reduction of 12.7 teaching positions, passing $400,000 of the total health plan cost increases to the employee, and savings resulting from our VRS debt service payoff. Non-personnel cost increases totaled $6.1 million, included increases in New Horizons by about $200,000, Fuel & Utilities $300,000, increases in our liability insurance, projection of $500,000, and operation and maintenance increases of $5.1 million. Total non-personnel decreases included a decrease in technology, software services, materials and supplies, recognition of attrition and turnover savings, and identified non-reoccurring one-time costs for a total savings of $9.6 million. Total increases of $23.8 million, total decreases $12.3 million, equals $11.5 million for a balanced budget. And of course, over here to the left, we did receive these additional city requests of $3.1 million, which was $1 million for cash capital, $118,000 for Aviation Academy grant to help fund those students getting the certificates that they need, that are very expensive. And of course, our annual technology replacement, which is part of our CIP cash of $2 million. Any questions?
Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, yes, I'll just ask a couple of questions, I think, that benefit the public and help us understand how we got here. Could you just explain the support caps to, in layman's terms? So, how did we end up with the $5 million, because of a relief in support caps? But what does that really practically mean?
So, during the gravy session, the General Assembly enacted a cap on non-teaching support positions staff in school, which was intended as a temporary measure to cover the budget deficit that year. However, I guess out of convenience for their budget, it remained in place all the way till now. What actually happened is, and it's when we got the information about, that they were removing the support cap and the number of positions that it was supposed to cover, the additional funds, it's actually 50% less than what we need to pay salaries now, because they're trying to use data from 2008. So, it's very good to get $5 million, but I would have liked to get $10 million, because that's what would have really covered what we needed.
Okay, and then this is a secondary question is, to explain this to the public, where it's not because of an increase of average daily enrollment of students, it's because of support cap. But what is our, what is our ADM, and did, how did it factor in, or essentially did not factor into this?
So.
This $5 million, correct?
We are actually getting $2.1 million less that we would have gotten if our student enrollment had not continued to decrease.
Yes, that answers that. So that, right, so this has, this has nothing to do with an increase in the number of students? This is purely support cap related?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and Ms. Minto and Mr. Brown, I think it's also important for us to say to the general public, we are not the only school district where the enrollment is decreasing, and there are a number of factors.
Ms. Ammon?
In fact, I remember reading that this last 2025 graduating class across the country is the largest, I think, in history, and it is only projected to go down. It's sort of the echo boom of the Boomers kids, but it's tapering off. So it's demographics versus anything. And just a question, because we had kicked around some ideas for, is, maybe I missed it, but is the thought that this $5.1, we're going to be using it in some of these additional considerations?
Right, so, if I could just glue this together. So, we have a risk of losing anywhere from $4.3 to $7 million in federal grants. So, we need to be mindful that that's going to change our spending plan in some kind of way. We probably won't lose all of that, but that's our, you know, the whole risk. So, but we also know we have challenges with teacher pay, bus drivers. We have some clerical, that's another group that we haven't actually looked at recently as far as market adjustments. So we want to, this is an opportunity for us to go back and do some homework and prepare ourselves for doing some different things, while being mindful that sometime in the fall, we're going to find out, at least for next year, what's going to happen with some of this federal funding.
Can I ask one more point of clarification? Because in the budget, the table, federal funding was $3.1. But then you're saying we're going to miss this $4.3 to $7.7, so I was just trying to tie.
So there's federal funding that's in our operating budget, that's impact aid. The funding that I'm discussing now is our grant funding, okay? That is confusing.
Okay, I have a question. So regarding the timing for the, you said, the uncertainty, normally we get it July 1?
We should start getting money immediately, but from what I've read, that's not a certainty this month. We haven't, we're not getting a lot of information from anyone about what's going to happen. We're really, really in the dark. But what we typically do with grant funding, that can be very, because some of it's 15-month cycles instead of 12-month cycle. So we cover these grants, we make sure people are paid that are in grants, with the anticipation that we're going to get this money later. But usually, there's an award letter or some kind of notification. So we're waiting for all our notifications to come in, and how much money that will be. And, you know, by October, we should know something.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Hunter? Okay, we understand, we have to leave, we understand. Okay, we're going to, we, yes.
I move to amend the.
You have to hear the amounts, right?
Oh.
We have to go through the amounts. Let me torture you with one more page. Here you go. There they are.
Oh, there we go.
If they're, okay, so at this time, I would like to ask the school board to vote on the amendment of the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. So the total school board adopted funds are increasing from $444,988,458 to $450,73,870, broken down as follows. Our general fund will be $411,370,970. Textbook fund, $8,182,252. Workers' compensation, $1,672,595. And child nutrition services, $28,848,053.
Thank you. Now we'll.
Thank you, Scarlett.
You're welcome.
I move to amend the FY '26 operating budget in the amount of $450,73,870.
Second.
Ms. Buffalo? Please follow the roll. All right. Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Abstain.
No, you don't have to abstain.
Four. Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Ammon?
Four.
Searl-Slaw?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. I'm going to, we're going to just pivot a little on the, because Mr. Hunter has to leave, so I'm going to allow him to go ahead and make his statement right now, then we'll go back to the agenda.
I just have to leave, unfortunately, I do have to leave for mandatory meeting at work today. So, again, I wanted to be here doing all the voting. And again, congratulations to our new chair and our vice chair. Look forward to you guys leading us for the coming year.
Thank you. Safe travels. Thank you. We will now move to Section 4, Reports and Information. 4.01 is the Annual Notice Regarding the Availability of School Board Policies and Procedures Manual. This announcement will serve as the required annual public notice that copies of the School Board Policies and Procedures Manual are available to the public and employees in the library of each school, in each Newport News Public Library, and online on the Policies and Procedures website at www.nnschools.org/policies, and on NNP's Intranet. Next on our agenda is 4.02, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to encourage our teachers and other staff that work 10 and 11 months to relax, and I'm hoping that they are enjoying and taking time for themselves. I also would encourage our parents, if your children are in summer school, and to continue that with the attendance, with the work. If your children are not in summer school, I strongly encourage you to take advantage of the opportunities that are presented. You can go to our website and look at a plethora of resources. For example, if your child is in second grade, and you want them to be able to maintain those skills, there's work that they can do. If you want them to advance, then you have the opportunity to look at third grade. So we have that available across the grade level, so I really encourage you to take advantage of that to continue the summer learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. We will move on to Item 5, an opportunity to hear from the public. The school board recognizes that some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email or voicemail up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute, with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates that your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. Ms. Buffalo, do we have any cards?
No cards.
No cards.
So we'll move on. At this time, we'll move on to matters by the school board, and we will begin, well, we did begin with Mr. Hunter, and Ms. Ammon, you're up next.
Absolutely, thank you. And congratulations, Chairwoman and Vice Chairwoman. Very excited to see your leadership this year. And I do want to echo what Dr. Mitchell said, there are great resources online. The reading list, easy way to get in, a few minutes of math practice each day, if you just want your kids to kind of keep things fresh. So, I might be making someone online do that. I think it's, I think it's a wonderful resource for parents who want to just, and it takes a lot of the confusion out of all those summer resources you can find online. It can be a little confusing, so it really dials down what, what our division is doing and expecting of students. So, excellent resource, yes. Hope everyone can take a break, we're trying, and come back ready to tackle the year.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yes, congratulations, Madam Chair and Co-Chair. I wanted to just recognize all the good work that is happening across the division in regards to summer and summer programs as well. I've had the opportunity to volunteer at Safe Haven in the North District, and they are taking advantage of that exact program. That superintendent has intended, all the campers there, there's, I believe, about 50 campers registered there are required to do 30 minutes a day in their computer lab, doing that educational enrichment. So thank you so much for that opportunity. I also wanted to shout out. I also wanted to shout out, um, an event that I attended, Chop City Hoops this weekend, um, where they had a basketball tournament at, uh, Safe Haven Empowerment Center, and there was representation from every high school alumni team and every, uh, high school in Hampton as well. Um, so, there was a battle for, uh, who was the best baller in, uh, in, across the, across, uh, the two, the two cities. And so, um, I just wanted to, um, shout out, uh, Justice, um, for facilitating that event. Um, it was the first one of its kind in the area, and it was, it was well, um, well-executed. Um, there were coaches from across the division, um, there were players, um, that have graduated from Newport News Public Schools, Hampton Public Schools, that all came together. Um, just an exceptional sight to see, and so I did want to shout him out. Um, and I also too, uh, wanted to bring to the attention of the public that there will be a Spectrum and School Bags Back-to-School Event, uh, for children and families on August second, um, from twelve to four, and that's also at Safe Haven Empowerment Center in partnership with, um, Empathetic Solutions and the Friendship Lottery. They are going to be giving away maybe clear book bags. Um, but there'll be a lot of resources, um, uh, and other opportunities for you all to meet other students. Um, they have specific, uh, they have a specialization in, in students that are on the spectrum, um, specifically, so there'll be a lot of resources, uh, for that population as well, so. Continue to have a good summer.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
All right. Well, uh, this is a great time, uh, where the year is not, not over yet, at least to me, it's, it's not, right? We're still transitioning to the new year, so I want to encourage all of the families to, um, uh, have your kids continue to work hard. Now is the time to, uh, really, uh, put your nose to the grindstone and, and, uh, advance yourself. Summer is a great time to get yourself ready for the upcoming school year. Uh, I would say you never want to take any time off. Your, your, uh, education is your vocation at this point in your lives as a young person, and the, the more time and effort and energy you put into that, then the easier and brighter your future is going to be. So, I want to encourage, uh, everyone to work hard, uh, for those that are in summer school. Congratulations, that's, that's a wonderful decision that you've made. Uh, and for those who are in, in summer school, I hope that you are taking advantage of, uh, reading, going to the library, studying, taking on some new skills, acquiring, uh, acquiring new skills, and doing some experience, at least some experiential learning, uh, yourselves during the summer, so that you can hit the ground running when we come back in the new school year. Uh, and then to all the graduates, I'm very much looking forward to seeing your happy faces in August. I've got that marked on my calendar. Uh, that's the best event of my summer, is getting to see all of our summer graduates, and I enjoy, I will enjoy watching you, uh, walk across the stage. Uh, to Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, congratulations on your appointments, uh, to these, uh, these positions, and I'm looking forward to a great year, looking forward to, uh, a really, a, a fresh, a fresh start. We're, we're a division that's on the rise, we've done a lot of really good things. We've seen, uh, double-digit increases in our test scores. We've seen increases in the number of schools, uh, credited, uh, without conditions, and I'm expecting, when we get back in the fall, we go see some more increases as well. So, no, no, no pressure, Dr. Mitchell, but I'm looking forward to a very, a very good fall and, and us setting ourselves up, uh, very well for this, this upcoming year, uh, movement forward. So, I, I believe all around, it's going to be, uh, a really good year. I know that we have a lot of work in, in front of us, we have some serious significant challenges. Uh, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chair, we've talked about the challenges that we face in the upcoming year. We've got to make some, um, some hard choices as we, as we always do, but the hard choices that we make, we can be the board that solves the problem. So, there's so many boards that have come before us that have allowed, that have kicked the can, uh, allow the problem to continue to fester, uh, but we can be the division that solves the problem. So, we know we have, uh, issues in terms of transportation and our zones, uh, uh, buildings that need, uh, repair, et cetera. I believe that we can be the board that solves the problem. And, and in being the board that solves the problem, that's what it's going to take for us to go to elite, to our elite levels that we know that we're capable of. Uh, and, uh, and Dr. Best, I, I'm going through my memory, I remember back, I think it was two thousand and eighteen, I told you I thought that you would make a good chair, and that you should run for, you should run for chair, you should run for vice chair, I remember that. Um, I was one of the first people to, um, to see that in you, and I'm believing that I was right, uh, because I don't often make mistakes. So, uh, so because I don't often make mistakes, I believe that it's going to be a great year. And, and that you're going to be a great chair, and I'm looking very, uh, very much forward to, to your leadership and supporting you in, uh, getting this division to where we want it to go.
Thank you. Ms. Searl's Law?
Yeah, I'm next, I'm laughing too much. Uh, let's see, the first thing I want to do is just extend our board's condolences to the Brooks family. Um, so, our, our Tracy is going through, um, some family challenges with her brother having a loss, and we just want to extend our condolences there. The budget, uh, it's funny, we get it, we get it presented in just a few slides and very concisely by, by, uh, Ms. Minto, but the real truth is, it has taken a lot behind the scenes for us to be able to get it to where it is balanced and, um, to reflect the needs of the board. So, a lot of cycles that have gone through, and I just want to thank you and your team. Uh, thank Dr. Mitchell, uh, for that, because it's, we know it's not easy, but this is, this is our game plan, you know, for, for the school year. I am really proud, uh, to be sitting next to the new chair. Uh, I have all confidence in her, as I stated, um, before the vote. I know that her passion for Newport News Public Schools is going to be extremely beneficial to, um, the work that we're going to do. And then, um, Ms. Alger, your passion for all things schools and all things teachers and all things being right is definitely going to be a, a beacon for us. And so, I really do appreciate you accepting the nominations. I honestly believe there should be a point where we nominate folks, but you all have to accept it. Um, so, thank you for, um, accepting, um, the charge, and do know you have a board that is strongly behind the both of you.
Thank you. Ms. Alger?
Yes, um, first of all, um, two things I, I want to address. Um, I, I know that summertime is a time for learning for, for students and for fa- families to enjoy and take trips, but I also know that's the hardest time, uh, for folks in central office and leadership in school buildings. That is when the work is, uh, kicking up real high, because in preparation for the upcoming year. And to me, uh, to be a place of excellence, uh, we have to always be ahead, be always, we have to foresee, and we always have to be prepared. So, thank you all, um, for making this summer very meaningful, knowing that this upcoming year, um, we are going to elevate and continue to grow. So, thank you for that. Um, I, I want to, um, thank everyone for, um, their vote of confidence, and, and I am proud to serve, uh, I'm definitely proud to work side by side, uh, with Dr. Best, and, um, and every time we communicate, it is about schools and students and learning, and what can we do better, and all, and all of that. Uh, but that's true, uh, in terms of our conversations or my conversations with each of you, and I want to thank you for your leadership and, uh, all that you do, um, to support one another, because that's what it's going to take for all of us working together, um, to get to the next level, um, and for making a difference and making sure that each and every student in our division is successful. And, you know, that's our goal, uh, that's what we're shooting for. Um, but for our kids to be successful, we need to make sure that our staff is successful, our teachers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria managers, our, you know, custodial staff. If everyone is working together, um, we know that it's, it'll become a flywheel, and we're just simply going to take off, and I'm looking forward to that, to, to being part of that. So, thank you all.
Thank you. So, I prepared a couple of comments, so I will not forget anything. So, first, I'd like to thank God, my family and my fellow board members, and everyone that believed and supported me throughout my school board tenure. It is an honor to be elected by my school board colleagues to serve as chair. I do not take this position lightly and will do everything in my power to advance and elevate the education of children enrolled in Newport News Public Schools. I consider myself a lifelong learner, and I look forward to serving with, in this capacity, with this dedicated team and continue to learn from each of you. Mr. Hunter, he's gone, but he's also known as, at one time, I was on eleven boards, he always says that to us. So, I look forward to his mentoring and his collaborative and him always being a team player. Ms. Amon, I word Smith. This lady right here can get it right, as far as that, that is her talent, and I learn from her every single time. She helps us to navigate policy and she take care of school board business. Ms. Harris, our youngest and most energetic member, your dedication and your extensive community work allows you to get right to work. And although I'm supposed to be mentoring you, you inspire me. Mr. Brown, thank you for your outside-of-the-box thinking and vocalizing regarding issues and your views, and for inspiring the board and me as an individual to reach higher levels. Ms. Alger, because of our similar educational backgrounds, we speak many times the same language. I know her husband's going to get sick of me, just like Lisa's husband got sick of me, but they were still always nice. But because you also speak Spanish, it allowed me to have a deeper understanding and immediate communication with a growing and important part of our school community. I'm impressed by your extensive knowledge as it relates to everything about education and your relationship with the State Department of Education, because she keeps me up. Sometimes when I go to that website, it's almost overwhelming, and she can just break it down, um, for me. And your ability to dive deeper and to look at the big picture, I look forward to working with you closely. Ms. Searl's Law, now attached to the Hill partner for the last two and a half years. Now, we thought going to the pandemic, going through the pandemic was challenging, but in our wildest dreams, we never would imagine our journey as chair and vice chair. There were times when incidents, criticism, condemnation was so intense that I thought that she would justifiably quit. There were times when we talked each other off the ledge, trust what I tell you. And then there were times when we held each other's hands and we just jumped. So, what many people don't know is that during her tenure, there were several occasions where she faced some very serious health challenges, but she always showed up, she always showed up. She never once considered throwing in the towel that she shared with me. And let me tell you, that she can hang, that little package right there can hang with the best of them. But through it all, she remained professional, she maintained a sense of decorum, she was kind, compassionate, she always knew what to say and how to say it. So, what I learned from you, Lisa, will be invaluable to me as I serve as chair, uh, for this most awesome school division. I sincerely thank my fellow school board members, Dr. Mitchell, and all of her staff, and I'm committed to give you to my, to give you my best. Two more comments. Also, my condolences to the family of Mr. Edward, Mr. Joseph Edwards, who was a longtime educator in the city, um, of Newport News. Um, I, I didn't know him personally, I knew of him, but just reading the comments from his colleagues and his teachers, he made quite an impact on our school division, so my condolences to his family. And as I close, I want to give a shout out to all of the Newport News employees that continue to work throughout the summer. Contrary to popular belief, the school year is, but the work is never done. In addition, summer school began yesterday, and after this meeting, Ms. Alger and I will be visiting summer school. A special shout out to our youth development department. I was sitting at home on Thursday, as I always tell Dr. Mitchell and Lisa, when I get these phone calls, I'm minding my own business. So, I was sitting at home Thursday, minding my own business, I got a phone call, and the person shared with me, there were four Newport News students that were homeless. So, I looked at the time on my cell phone, it was two fifty-four. And if you know anything about summers and schools, Thursday at two fifty-four is really Friday at two fifty-four. And I was like, oh my God, what are we gonna do? So, I immediately called Ms. Adams, and they got right on it. They, we gave some identifying information so they could look up the family, and I received a text from the person that called me like seven something that night, and said at that time, they were in Walmart getting some much needed items for those families. So, people are working, many people think schools are closed, but we have so many dedicated staff members that are working and working hard throughout the summer, so I wanted to say thank you and let you know that we did not, um, forget about you. And last but not least, I want everybody to get a good book, parents, students, teachers, everybody get something that you really enjoy reading, and don't forget to read. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your summer. This meeting is adjourned.